And with that, I would like to introduce you to our moderator this evening, Chris Sigurdsson.
Thank you, Mr. Scully. Hi, again, Scully. Noted. My name is Chris Sigurdsson, and I will be your moderator tonight. I am a member of the -- Member? Where'd it go? Hello? Come on. I'm holding it. Okay. Is this?
Check, check, check. Check, check, check.
Hold it right up to my mouth? Okay, think I got it. All right. My name is Chris Sigurdsson. I am a member of the League of Women Voters Minneapolis, but I do not live in Ward Eight. See, I told you, the microphone's really tricky. You gotta hold it right there. Okay. The League of Women Voters is a volunteer organization with a long history of providing unbiased candidate and issue information that is widely used by voters regardless of political beliefs. This forum is cosponsored by IATA Leeds, Community Power Minnesota, Field Regina, Northrop Neighborhood Group, Kingfield Neighborhood Association, Lyndale Neighborhood Association, and Make Voting a Tradition. The views expressed are those of the candidates and not those of the cosponsors. Neither the League of Women Voters nor its cosponsors endorse candidates or political parties. We're holding this forum for voters to hear about the candidates and to compare their ideas. This forum is being held in front of a live audience at the Reverend Dr. Martin Luther King Jr. Recreation Center and is being livestreamed to Zoom in English and Somali via the link available at our website, l w v m p l s dot org. Thank you to MCN6 for the production and recording of this event. We ask that campaign buttons or campaign T-shirts or any kind of literature not be distributed or shown during this forum. Please remain as quiet as possible while the candidates are speaking so that everyone can hear the discussion. We also ask that you hold your applause until the end of the forum so that candidates will have the maximum time to respond to your questions. Finally, please silence all electronic devices. Ward Eight, located in south-central Minneapolis, includes vibrant and culturally diverse communities, businesses, parks, and entertainment venues. It is notably home to the George Floyd Memorial Square. Ward Eight is made up of the neighborhoods of Bancroft, Bryant, Central, Field, Kingfield, Lyndale, Regina, and Northrop. Four candidates are running for the Ward Eight City Council seat, and all agreed to participate this evening. As a reminder, Minneapolis local elections have ranked choice voting instead of primaries. You have the power to rank three candidates in order of preference on the November ballot. For all races with more than two candidates, you should consider not just your first choice, but your second and third choices as well. Let me introduce you to the candidates in alphabetical order. Andrea Jenkins. Raise your hand. Soren Stevenson. Bob Sullentrop. And Terry White. We have time keepers sitting in the front row so that each candidate has the same amount of time to respond to the questions. Following the opening statements, each candidate will have up to one and a half minutes to answer each question, and then one minute to make a closing statement. The timekeeper will hold up a card when there are 15 seconds left and a stop card when time is up. We ask that the candidates finish their sentence and stop at that point. Questions from community members were submitted in advance via our email. During the forum, we will take written questions from the audience. A volunteer will gather the questions. They'll be walking around and hand them to our question facilitators and then to me. We ask that the questions be clear and pertinent to the issues at hand and made in the form of a question, not a statement. Questions that are hostile, leading, or of a personal nature will not be asked. We may consolidate questions of the same general topic, so please understand if your question is worded differently. Finally, all questions are the property of the League of Women Voters Minneapolis. We'll ask questions about policing and public safety, housing, neighborhood support and welfare, climate and environmental equity, city government, and general questions. To get as many topics as possible, we will need to limit the number of questions in each category. Since there is never enough time to cover all the issues, if you feel your question was not addressed, please contact the candidates directly after the forum at the meet and greet. For your opening statement now, we ask you, the candidates, to address this question. Why are you running for the Ward Eight City Council seat? And what are your qualifications and skills? You will each have up to two minutes to respond. The order of responding was determined by drawing numbers, and the first candidate to speak will be Bob Sullentrop.
Thank everybody for coming tonight. I am a strong law and order supporter. It is my firm belief that if we do not continue to hire more police and put a stop to all the lawless behavior that has permeated our city, more people will join those who have already left until we end up with large sections of the city completely deserted, as had already happened in Detroit and St. Louis. When this happens, the city has failed. Although I am for more police and restoration of law and order, I don't support giving the police a free rein. I am for tough but fair police reforms that would hold the police to higher standards but wouldn't take away their ability to perform their jobs. The Police Department is currently understaffed by several hundred officers. There is an ongoing effort to hire more officers than to weed out those who are found to be unfit for duty. The department is also in the process of writing and adopting police reforms. If elected to the City Council, I would like to do my part in helping to make this a safer city where people would feel free to walk around without the fear of being attacked by criminals or to have their cars stolen by underage car hijackers. Can I continue with that, or?
You get a signal, you can continue.
Recently, Shivanti Seth Amanda, the second vice chair of the Democratic Party in Minnesota, was attacked in her driveway in Minneapolis where their kids in the car, and her car was carjacked. She was beaten and suffered a broken leg, lacerations to her head, and bruises. Neighbors who tried to help were held off at gunpoint by masked gunmen. She now is calling for holding all carjackers in custody and prosecuting them. It has been the practice in Minneapolis and likely other cities of Minneapolis, Minnesota, to catch and release underage carjackers. This practice was supported by Keith Ellison, Minnesota's Attorney General, and it was started following the rioting after George Floyd's murder. Carjacking.
Thank you. Andrea Jenkins.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Andrea Jenkins, and I just want to say thank you to all the organizers, to the League of Women Voters, to all of the neighborhood organizations, Community Power, for hosting this forum this evening. I am running to represent, to continue to represent the Ward Eight of Minneapolis because I deeply and dearly love this city that I live in. And I love this neighborhood and this community that I have spent over 25 years of my life working directly in on issues that are pertinent to this community. I'm running to represent Ward Eight and to be a part of the Minneapolis City Council because of the deep inequities that are in our society, to that the deep racial inequities that continuously we see this gap of homeownership, of access to health care, of access to employment, et cetera, et cetera. It's the largest gap in the entire country. As I mentioned, this is a beautiful city. We have so many assets and resources, and yet Black and Brown people are still woefully behind. And so I am running to be able to continue to try to close that gap of inequities that are plaguing this community and communities all over the country. But I also think that we have a wonderful opportunity to continue the progress that we have seen since the murder of George Floyd, since the COVID shutdown, and I'll stop there.
Thank you. Soren Stevenson.
Yeah, thank you so much for having me. In 2020, I was at peaceful protest when Minneapolis police officer shot me, and I lost my left eye and most of my sense of smell. Since then, I've had to go through a meaning-making process about what it means to be me, what it means to be a white man shot in the struggle for Black liberation. And I've come away with that, for me, it's a call to action. I have a responsibility to make sure that that kind of brutality doesn't happen to other people. So then, at the same time that I was going through that meaning-making process, my profession is affordable housing. And through that work, I have seen that the city of Minneapolis is too often on the side of giant corporations rather than on our side, the side of residents. We can have a city where the public safety system works for everyone and works. We can have a city where the police are accountable to us. We can have a city where our neighbors have a place to sleep at night and people aren't pushed out by rising prices. We can have a city that deals boldly with climate crisis. My master's was in housing policy, and my work since then has been working for affordable housing, nonprofit. And this is, this and those values are why my neighbors asked me to run. They want to see those values represented in City Hall. I have the relationships required to begin governing well on day one. I am the only candidate on this stage to be endorsed by the DFL. I am the only candidate on this stage to be endorsed by a sitting City Council member. And I am the only candidate on this stage to be endorsed by a sitting state legislature, Ayesha Gomez, from right here in Ward Eight. It's these and more of why I am ready and excited to represent you in City Council. Thank you so much for having me.
Thank you. Terry White.
Hi, good evening. Thank you to the sponsors for hosting this event, and I appreciate that so many residents have shown up. I think it shows a real commitment that we share for improving the city. It's why we participate in neighborhood associations and other community activities. I believe in a better way for Minneapolis. It's why I'm running, to be your next City Council representative, and ask that you make me your first choice on the ballot. I'm a homeowner of 16 years in the Field Neighborhood. I have two teenage boys, and my wife is a psychotherapist with an office near Uptown. My in-laws live in Minneapolis, and my wife's parents are in their 90s. My background includes 20 years working in healthcare regulatory services. I know what it means to be held accountable in stressful and ambiguous situations. I have experience in training and management, negotiations, cost-benefit analysis, budgeting, and compliance. I'm a progressive Democrat committed to creating a city that reflects our best values, is future-focused, and runs efficiently. I want to see the city heal from crimes committed by our police force, as well as maintain adequate staffing to serve our public safety needs. I have a plan to address the 40 homeless encampments in our city and be prepared if their number increases. Many of the topics I expect to discuss tonight are complex. Issues pertaining to homeless encampments, housing affordability, crime, and climate change require a coordinated effort to solve. The solutions to these problems cannot be fully described in the short amount of time we're allowed to speak. If you'd like to learn more detail about any of my responses tonight, I encourage you to visit my website, betterminneapolis.com, or email my campaign directly. Thank you.
Thank you. Now we move to the questions from the live audience and those submitted in advance. Candidates will have up to one and a half minutes to answer these questions. The first question is from Ward Eight. What is working and what is not working to reduce crime in our city, and what would you do differently? Soren.
The city is not meeting our basic need about being safe everywhere in the city. That is why a comprehensive public safety system that works and works for everybody and centers racial justice is my top priority. That means we need to expand our 911 options so that the right person with the right training is responding at the right time. This means prioritizing proactive approaches to prevent crime rather than reactive approaches. Current leadership has doubled down on the reactive approaches that have failed to keep us safe up to this point. Rather, we need to invest in youth programs that'll give young people something important to do with their time. We need to have an individualized response for domestic violence, as we know that Minneapolis police have not been effective at protecting victims. And we need to help our, continue to invest in our co-responders, who, at this point in time, it takes them about an hour to show up when someone calls for them. These are our mental health co-responders. It is going to require a broad coalition in order to tackle this perennial issue, and I'm excited to bring that broad coalition to bear to make sure that we have safety throughout the city.
Thank you. Terry.
Thank you. I know crime is a very important issue for a lot of people. I think the city is doing some things right, for sure. They have programs to address gang violence and try and engage youth earlier before they do get involved. I don't think you can really talk about crime and violence without talking about poverty in the city. Seventeen percent of the population here lives in poverty. So I do think you have to try and address both of those issues. And I do support hiring more police. I think we need to be at the city charter level, which is 731. But I don't think that solves crime. I think it needs to be a multifaceted approach and continue some of the programs that are out there. I do support a guaranteed basic income and expanding that program. So, I mean, those are, those are a few things, I think, that will help, but maybe one of the biggest is to build bridges between the police and a lot of community members that have been hurt by their actions. I think to really move forward as a city, the police are going to need to adhere to some of the decrees that they're in, and it's going to take a lot of really hard work to build back trust, but it needs to be undertaken. Thank you.
I'm sorry. I was instructed. Andrea.
So, first of all, I just want to say, win twins. Way to go, twins. They won today. But, you know, what is working is the city is already creating a comprehensive continuum of public safety. We created the Commission on Public Safety, which includes bringing together our Police Department, our Fire Department, Emergency Management, 911, and our Violence Interrupters. Today, I just met with the mayor's nominee to be the commissioner of that department, sitting Chief Judge Todd Barnett. And so I think we're on a good path to create this continuum of public safety. We also see that crime is down, and I certainly recognize that if you are the victim of a crime, then it is a huge problem for you. And we have had more cars stolen in the city of Minneapolis than in the last three years. And so we have to address those kinds of issues. But I think that addressing the root causes of crime is where we have to spend our time, energy, and work, invest in affordable housing, invest in after-school programs, invest in opportunities for our young people.
Thank you. Bob.
I went into some of this already in my opening statement, but I'm for a strong police department, and hiring more officers would be the first start, and bringing it up to at least the, at least the amount that's required by ordinance. And then also passing all the things that they need to do in order to reform the Police Department so we don't have any more incidents of police brutality and racism. Along those lines, I would also like to point out that I started to talk about the gal that was beat up and got a broken leg in her front yard, and she's now in favor of prosecuting those people and putting them in jail. And, and, up until now, they've been practicing catch and release with the underage carjackers. That means they're right back out on the street. They don't put them in jail, and they don't put them in prison. There's no trials or anything. They just let them go. And the police know who all of them are, and they, and they're not able to do anything. What we need to do is put, try those people as adults and put them in prison where they belong.
Thank you. The next question. What steps would you propose to prevent, oops, I'm sorry, I got a different question in mind. Where do you now think the Third Precinct Police Station should be built, why, and when? Andrea.
Thank you. Well, it was highly publicized, and I thought we should probably have a Third Precinct at the Century Plaza, which would have given us time to have a really significant community conversation around where, in fact, the Third Precinct should be, within the boundaries of the Third Precinct. It is, we're back to square one. I think we really need to have a conversation with our community members to understand where that precinct should go. Many of our neighbors think that we should have it back at Lake and Minnehaha. There is the option of 2600 Hayawata, and apparently the Century Plaza option is off the table. It's a conundrum, and I think we have to have community engagement and involvement to figure out exactly where that precinct should go.
Bob. Where do you now think the Third Precinct Police Station should be built, why, and when?
I don't have a problem with rebuilding it where it was, where it was before, and as soon as possible.
Terry.
Yeah, I would agree. I think we rebuild it where it was burnt down. I think the community has spoken. The city did commission a survey, and 66% of residents voted that way. I think we're doing a disservice to the Third Precinct by letting this linger. It's been three years. I do think it's failure in leadership that we're back to ground zero. I was really disappointed to see the proposal for Century Plaza, which would cost twice as much as rebuilding on the current site. And those, those tax dollars are precious. I mean, the money that, that was going to be spent, spent, sorry, to rebuild there can go to a lot of other programs, programs to help youth, to help homeless, to help work towards more affordable housing. So it was, I think it was a really bad decision to put that forward and then let it, let it go all the way to getting voted down again and now be back to zero. So I would rebuild, and I think that would help the healing process. I don't think when we rebuild, it needs to be a military installation. I think it can be a building and a community area that begins the process of bridging a big divide in the community.
Thank you. Soren.
I think the first question about this is, are we seeing lesser service in the Third Precinct because of the lack of a precinct? And in terms of response times, that evidence has not been presented yet. So in my opinion, that gives us a little time to come up with the right solution. Our community is still traumatized by what happened in 2020, and we are still working through, what are we going to do and what should happen at that Third Precinct? I think we should explore a substation model so that there are locations closer in to people's neighborhoods where you can access the services that you want. And I think that the original building should be repurposed into something else. There are RFPs out now to find out what that something else might be, and I would support repurposing that. And finally, it'll be important that the engagement process around placing these substations or a new precinct be an open process, where people are able to give their input as opposed to the binary options that we were given previously. So we have the opportunity to make the right decision, and I think we should take our time to make the right decision, so long as we're seeing the same level of service in the Third Precinct as we're seeing in other precincts.
Thank you. The next question.
I do want to just clarify, there are no RFPs out for the Third Precinct.
Please hold that for your next opportunity to speak. Next question is, what steps would you propose to prevent and support repeat offenders, including underage ones, from carjackings, garage thefts, car thefts, et cetera? And Terry.
Well, this is a tricky one. I don't know how much the city can really do in terms of how prosecution occurs. I do know one of the reasons that I moved to the area here quite a few years ago is because my wife took a job at the Hennepin County Homeschool, which no longer exists. And that was, that was a great program, and it was an eye-opener, too, because you saw that a lot of those youth, that was the first time they were getting three meals. It was the first time a lot of them had ever had any mental health services whatsoever. So, you know, I can fully understand why people would be angry about multiple offenders being set loose. I don't know that the City Council can, can stop that. I think people have to vote for prosecutors, if that's what they want. But I do think the programs that the city has on offer to try and intervene before people do get involved in the justice system should be supported. And I do think we have to really look at helping economic development. I mean, it makes a big difference. I mean, one of the things, when kids were released from the Hennepin County Homeschool, they were going right back into the same neighborhoods with the same gangs, and no matter how much progress they'd made, it was really hard to escape.
Thank you. Soren.
Can you repeat the question, please?
What steps would you propose to prevent and support repeat offenders, including underage ones, from carjackings, garage thefts, car thefts, et cetera?
Yeah, thank you. I think the important thing is that we are preventing these kind of crimes in the first place and preventing particularly underage people from getting in a situation where they're repeat offenders. We need to meet these youth basic need. If they don't have their basic needs met, if we're not giving them the tools that they need in order to succeed in life, then they may go down a path where they do risky things like carjack. It is not natural for children and young people to steal cars. And so we need to go out and, and meet their needs so that they're not in a place where they, they feel that that is the best option for them. And in terms of repeat offenders, I think it's the same. We need to meet their needs, and in some instances, we'll need to hold them accountable through the court process, and in others, it'll be more appropriate for us to gather a restorative justice process, where people are able to tell them what they have done and communicate with them that we want them to stop and the effect that they're having on the community with guidelines around their future behavior.
Thank you. Bob.
Well, I've kind of already answered this question. I think that, that the young people that are stealing cars and beating up people and with armed, armed with guns and whatever ought to be tried as adults and put in prison.
Thank you. Thank you. Andrea.
Well, the question of repeat offenders is not really an issue that the city council can have a role in. But what we can do is help to mitigate some of the issues that do bring young people to commit crimes, particularly crimes of opportunity, like breaking in garages, stealing bikes and lawn mowers, et cetera. For the more egregious crimes of carjacking with guns, et cetera, those kinds of crimes need to be held accountable. I really hate that we have lost the county homeschool and models like that. We need to bring some of those kinds of things back. In St. Paul, they've had smaller systems like that, homes where young people can go and learn skills, learn trades, eat three meals a day, and have those kinds of opportunities. We need to institute that in the city of Minneapolis and really reach out and give opportunity to our young people.
How would you, as a city council member, increase the availability of affordable housing? Would you support rent control? Would you suggest other options? And please also address deeply affordable housing. Bob?
Rent control has already been passed. I think it was an amendment on the last ballot during the city election. And so it just hasn't been implemented yet, as far as I know. And I guess I don't have a real problem with it. I think it's set at 3% per year. But I do believe that when the city has mandates that a landlord fixes up his property, that I think he should be able to recoup his costs. And if they're over 3%, then I think he should be allowed to pass those costs along to his renters.
Andrea.
Well, that's a very packed question. I do think, you know, we brought 700 units of affordable housing to Ward Eight since I've been in office. 287 of those units are deeply affordable. And so we need to continue to invest in our affordable housing program. This year, we're going to invest $18 million, which is a historic investment in the Affordable Housing Trust Fund. We need to really incentivize the preservation of affordable housing, which we just passed a $5 million levy to public housing to ensure that we can preserve public housing, also historic. And so those are some of the ways that we can keep rents down. I support having a rent control policy that is very targeted, targeted to the people who are suffering the most, which is black and brown moms. And we know the zip codes. The reports told us 55411, 55412, and 55406, which is the Phillips community. And so we need to target resources to those egregious landlords, those corporate landlords that are disabusing black and brown moms, and use universal basic income to support those families.
Thank you. Terry.
So affordable housing is a very complex topic, and I really encourage you to read my website, betterminneapolis.com, because I'm not going to be able to do it justice. The city has made some progress adding affordable housing, but those are drops in a vast lake of the housing market. And I think the city needs to be prepared for some very hard times coming ahead. 8% interest rates can't be ignored. People can't afford to move because houses are so expensive. They're locked in in many ways. I do support some of the programs the city has done, like Stable Homes and Stable Schools. I think the 4D program, giving landlords tax incentives to offer deeply affordable housing, are very worthwhile. I'm also proposing that there be a luxury tax on rentals over the median rent. And I explain how that would work on my website much better. But when you look at statistics for what's happening in the rental market, the median cost for a one-bedroom apartment's gone up 20% in the last year. So while the city has added some affordable housing, much more of the high-end rental is being added to the market, and it's going to drive prices up, is my prediction.
Thank you. Soren.
The housing crisis is deep, and it is multifaceted. There is no one policy that is going to solve the entirety of the issue. However, there are a lot of things that we know can and will work. I support a strong rent stabilization policy because we need to keep our neighborhoods and our neighbors stable in their homes. This housing crisis is affecting all of us, whether we're renters looking at our lease and wondering whether we're going to be able to stay in our home again, whether we're first-time homebuyers looking around and not finding any home that's reasonable, or whether we're seniors looking to downsize and not being able to find something in our neighborhood that we can downsize to. I am a renter, and I know intimately the feeling of coming to the end of a lease and not knowing whether I'm going to live in that home anymore. And this is an experience that's shared across the city by so many renters. When we talk about the housing crisis, we're talking about people's most basic need, about a place for them to sleep at night, a place for them to be safe, a place for them to raise their families. And so when we talk about the housing crisis, there are so many things we need to do, starting with rent stabilization, but continuing on to having a full public housing levy of $10 million, which we are allowed to do, and Having a Tenant Opportunity to Purchase Act, meaning you can buy the home that you live in if it comes up for sale.
Thank you. The next question. As a city council member, how would you suggest the city address encampments? Soren.
Encampments are a violation of our core values. They are a violation of our conscience. To have people sleeping on the streets, it's wrong. And the city is not doing enough right now to make sure that people have that basic need met. Having people sleep on the streets is not safe for them and is not safe for us. And so we need to be addressing this like the crisis that it is. We have failed to provide a housing-first model for our unhoused neighbors. We know nationally that a housing-first model, where you house someone and then wrap services around them, has proven to be effective in keeping people in their homes. And we have failed to treat people who are sleeping on the streets with dignity and respect. Our current system is cruel, it is expensive, and it is ineffective. And it is impinging upon us to change course immediately so that we can be getting people into housing, we can be spending less money on just pushing people around and throwing their belongings away. There is so much that needs to be done on the housing crisis generally, and there is so much that needs to be done on the issue of homelessness in our city. We can, in fact, have a kinder and safer city where people have a place to sleep at night. We're just not choosing to do that right now.
Thank you. Terry.
The encampments are really the main reason that I decided to jump into this race. I really -- it hurt me deeply to be driving through them on the way to work, seeing people nodding off on the street corners. That's why I'm proposing a $30 million fund for emergency shelters now. Because I don't believe that we're going to have nearly enough affordable housing in the next two to three years to really house these people. As many programs as -- even if we were to start building today, it's going to take years. And these people are on the streets now, and I think there's a real potential there's going to be more next year. $30 million might sound like a lot. It's less than 2% of the budget that the mayor is proposing. And, you know, what I want to do with the money is creating micro-communities. I want regulated communities for these people to stay in until they can get the services they need to be able to really move on to the next part of their lives. And the system I'm proposing is really modeled after what they've done in Denver, and Denver's spending $50 million. So my thinking is that if we can spend the money now and get ahead of this, or we can wait and maybe spend 50 or 60 a year or two down the road.
Thank you. Bob?
Well, what we've done up until recently was we had people that were homeless, they went to shelters, and they stayed overnight, and they followed the rules, and they weren't allowed to have drugs or anything else. And then all of a sudden, we had encampments that sprung up, and the people are living in them, and there's no discipline at all in that, and they get into drugs. And then they expect the city to put them up in hotels when the winter comes. And there was a place over on Lindale, I think between like 58th Street and 56th Street, where there used to be some motels in there. And now they're all torn down. They put the people from the tents in there, and they kind of wrecked the place. And so I think that if, you know, if we're going to do anything about it, I think they should first go to shelters where there's requirements that they meet. And I think there are shelters available. I don't know if they're being used by those people. Maybe we have to add more to them, but I don't know what the situation is. But I know that there's a resistance on the part of the people that live in the tents to go to places like that because they don't want to be forced to reform their life.
Thank you. Andrea.
Yeah, we do have to get real about encampments. Housing-first model, a model that has services that deal with addiction, that deal with mental health crises, are utterly important. It is inhumane to allow people to sleep outside. We do have shelters. There are a lot of people who, for several reasons, some valid, don't want to be in shelters. Some say they can't bring their pets, they can't be with their partners, et cetera. But some people are adamant that they want to be able to access and use drugs. And we live in a society that a lot of people use drugs in their homes, right? And so that shouldn't dictate whether or not people should have a home, but they have to be able to access those homes. And so we need to have services, we need to have resources for those people. It's a county issue, it's a state issue, it's a nationwide issue. And I'm not sure if the answers are as simple as we can name in one minute and 30 seconds.
Thank you. Next question. Many lower-income homeowners residents have been hit with increased property taxes for things like infrastructure and ashbore, and are struggling to stay in their homes or face displacement. Some assistance is being provided, but it is not retroactive. Where do you stand on providing financial relief or other programs for these residents? Andrea.
I do support universal basic income. We are doing a couple of pilots on that right now in the city of Minneapolis. For some of those neighbors, we need an income-means-tested ability to be able to help people who are dealing with ashbore, diseased trees. Taking down those trees can be extremely expensive. And the park board, we're working with the park board and the city to be able to help those neighbors to take those trees down. We just received an $8 million grant from the federal government to plant more trees in these communities. And so that is going to help. But yes, universal basic income is an option that I think we need to consider to help low-income communities in Minneapolis.
Thank you. Bob?
Let me repeat the question.
Many lower-income homeowners residents have been hit with increased property taxes for things like infrastructure and ashbore, and are struggling to stay in their homes or face displacement. Some assistance is being provided, but it is not retroactive. Where do you stand on providing financial relief or other programs for these residents?
I wasn't aware there was a problem like that, so I don't have any response to it.
Okay, thank you. Soren.
The issue of folks being house-rich but cash-poor is a real problem in our communities, and it's only going to get worse as our community ages. So it's really important that we do have retroactive programs that allow people to access the resources that they need in order to stay in their home, whether they've had an ash tree taken down or whatnot. Another thing is that we really need to pull together a large group and start exploring ways to help folks who are, again, house-rich but cash-poor, because the problem is only going to increase more and more. And it would be, it would really be a moral failing of ours to see our elders and see low-income homeowners being kicked out of their homes and having their homes taken by the city or county for lack of ability to pay property taxes.
Thank you. Terry.
Yeah, I would agree. I think that property taxes have an additional burden on people with fixed incomes, particularly the elderly and the poor. I think when I say that I'm a progressive Democrat, I do believe in progressive taxation. I don't believe in the flat fees that happen in the city. I think that's a regressive tax. I think when we start looking at property taxes, you know, there needs to be some means testing, there needs to be some adjustment. I don't know what those exact levels are, but I do think we need to think about that. We really want to try and keep people from being forced out of their homes, help people get an economic foothold in our community. As I said earlier, 17% of this city lives in poverty. I mean, that alone causes an enormous amount of problems for everyone, for them living in that situation, for the demand it puts on emergency services. And we can help with progressive taxes. Thank you.
Thank you. The next question is on climate and environmental equity. Minneapolis's current funding for equitable climate action in the city is about $2 to $3 million annually, coming from what's called the franchise fee. Excel and CenterPoint utility customers, you and me, in Minneapolis pay this as a percentage of our total utility bills. The question to the candidates is, what scale of dedicated funding do you, as a city council member, believe is needed to meet Minneapolis's climate goals in an equitable way? And where would you propose this funding should come from? This question was from our Community Power cosponsor.
Yeah, I support the implementation of the Climate Equity Plan. However, I think there's probably not nearly enough money in the city to really fund everything that's in there. A lot of great ideas went into it. I do think, you know, it's not a bad idea to have a fee on utility bills to help pay for it. Again, I don't think it's a flat fee. I think it would have to be progressive, probably based on the more energy you consume, the higher tax you would pay. I think that could help. But I do think there's a lot of responsibility that we all bear just in our own behavior to change the environment, whether that means turning off lights, driving less, switching to, you know, not eating as much meat. I don't think the city really can solve the climate crisis on its own. One of the things I read recently that was interesting is that they had to actually shut down some of the wind generators because the transmission lines couldn't handle it. And right now, utilities are having to spend $140 million to just update, do the basic updates. So I think what we can do is push the utilities to improve the grid so that we're not losing so much electricity from wind and solar. so much electricity from wind and solar. We need to be more efficient, and I think we all have a responsibility. Thank you.
Thank you. Soren?
We are in a climate emergency, and it is time to act now. We do not have enough time to wait before acting on climate change. My children will be alive in the year 2100. And so when we think about those climate futures that are scary, those climate futures that we don't really want to spend time thinking about, that's the life that my children will live in. The city needs to invest on the scale of tens of millions of dollars in order to see that we are doing our part for making Minneapolis a climate-resilient and a climate-ready city. The city is not doing that currently. In fact, the city of Minneapolis has fees on different air pollutants, but it has not deemed carbon a pollutant that is worth having a fee on. So we are way behind the eight ball when it comes to even beginning to deal with this process. We need that fee, and we need to match the funds coming from the federal government from the latest climate bill. The federal government is willing to invest huge sums of money on climate adaptation in Minneapolis, but Minneapolis has to put forward some first. So part of that is going to have to come from the general fund. Some of that is going to have to come from franchise fees, where we need to balance currently industrial users are paying less than residential users. And we'll need to look for other monies in order to make sure that we are funding that ongoing into the future. And when we have the money, we need to make sure we are prioritizing environmental justice.
Thank you. Andrea?
So we did just pass the Climate Legacy Initiative, which raises franchise fees on these utilities, which will raise about $10.3 million per year indefinitely to address the housing crisis. I'm sorry, the climate crisis. It is one of the most pernicious challenges in the world today. And every city, every country, every community, and every individual has to do their part. You know, when we talk about raising fees on corporations, on other industries, and we should, however, we have to understand that we are in this capitalist society and they are going to pass those fees on to us. And so we have to balance that with not driving people out of our community. Those funds will be used in an equity approach to the most low-income people in our communities to get solar panels, to get insulation, to get energy-efficient appliances, and that will start next year.
Thank you. Bob?
Well, I don't have a big problem with the fee that she's talking about. But in general, I think what is needed nationwide is to have better planning so that one state isn't doing anything, like Montana. I just believe, I heard in the news that they're having problems out there doing anything. And Minnesota, which is probably trying to do too much, as far as I'm concerned. And I think it should be a national plan. And I think the utility companies, as far as electrical generation, I think they should bear the cost of that. I don't think the government should be providing all the windmills and solar panels. I think that the utility companies should be doing that. And we should also be thinking about nuclear power plants, which are capable of putting out a lot more electricity than a windmill. And anyway, it's a big problem. And we also have to, you know, just with the United States doing everything and trying to get down to zero emissions is kind of asinine. I think what we need to do is get the rest of the world to do their share, and maybe we won't have to go to zero discharge because it'll all even out and we'll meet the goal without doing all that.
Thank you. The next question. How can the city make sure that every resident is supported to access new federal clean energy funding? Bob?
Could you repeat that, please?
How can the city make sure that every resident is supported to access new federal clean energy funding?
I'm not sure how that would happen, so.
How can residents of the city access the federal funding that is now available for clean energy, to support them in their use of clean energy?
What do you mean, like putting solar panels on their roof and stuff like that?
I really don't know.
I guess I don't really support the federal government providing those types. I think if it's in their interest to put solar panels on their roof, they should pay for it out of their own pocket.
Okay. Thank you. Andrea?
Well, I think, you know, certainly the city can be a communication vehicle to help people understand those various programs. We can set up community workshops, work with our community partners to be able to get the word out and help people access federal government programs. Yeah, I mean, I think those would be the most direct and pertinent ways to help people to access federal government funds. I'm not sure if I understand the question, but if that is the question, those are some of the things the city can do.
And that's my understanding of the question. Thank you. Terry?
I'm a little stumped by the question, too, because I'm not familiar with the grants being discussed. But I would say Andrea's right on that providing education to the community as to what they can access is very important. And, you know, as long as I have a little time, I just wanted to talk a little bit more about climate change, though. I do support the green zones that the city's established. I love the idea of creating green jobs and training people for jobs of the future. I think that's terrific. If, you know, grants will help fund those programs, all the better. So, thank you.
Thank you. Soren?
Thankfully, I am actually not confused by the question because there is already a plan that is not being implemented, that is possible for Minneapolis to implement, called Inclusive Financing, where when we negotiate with the utility, which we are able to do, we can negotiate that they put the upfront cost and then put the cost on your electricity bill. And so when you put solar panels, when you do energy efficiency upgrades in your home, and those can cost thousands of dollars, that Excel is the one who puts the thousands of dollars forward, and then they charge you on your electricity bill going forward. That is a plan that has already been mapped out, and we are able to do that when it comes time for us to negotiate with Excel again. So that is something I deeply support because we need to be able to allow our low-income homeowners and renters to be able to also access energy efficiency upgrades, electrification, so that we can have clean air in everyone's homes, not just the homes of people who can afford to spend thousands of dollars upfront or get a loan in order to electrify their home. It's these things and more of why I'm endorsed by the Sierra Club. I'm endorsed by many transportation and climate organizations because they recognize that in this race, there is one candidate that is ready to work on climate change and is ready to get to work tomorrow.
Thank you. Next question comes from the Neighborhood Support and Welfare. Do you, this again is Ward Eight, do you see the neighborhood associations and councils benefiting, Ward Eight? Why or why not? How would you address neighborhood association funding? Terry?
I definitely support the neighborhood associations. It's my understanding that they used to receive state funding, and now all the funding is coming from the city. So I'm not exactly sure how in the budget to divide that out, but I think one of the things that the city can do is to help them with their projects. I know the Field Regina neighborhood did buckthorn removal along Minnehaha Creek, and they had to go through four different agencies to pick seeds for replacing the buckthorn. Now, I think the city can help them by stepping in and coordinating it, knowing that they don't have a great amount of funds any longer, doing things like that. And I don't know if the snow removal question is on the docket, but, you know, I would also like to look into having neighborhood associations more involved in coordinating any type of pilots for city snow removal. I do have some concerns about, you know, putting other companies out of business that are already doing snow removal. I think neighborhood associations are a great wealth of local knowledge, and I do support them.
Thank you. Bob?
Well, I haven't had a whole lot of experience with the neighborhood associations. I know we got a pretty active one with the Kingfield one, and they, but I have not gone to any of their meetings, so I guess I'm sort of ignorant as to what exactly they do. But I have no objection to what they're doing. So other than that, I do support their work, though.
Thank you. Andrea?
I think neighborhood organizations bring a very positive asset to Ward Eight. I think that was the question. The city, you know, I think Terry alluded to the fact that neighborhood organizations were initially sort of funded through the NRP program. The NRP program was about 30 years ago, and it was a collaboration of state, county, and city funds. We used a TIF district to be able to fund those neighborhoods. The TIF district went away, tax increment financing, 20 years ago. The city decided to, and the state and the county went away, too. The city decided that neighborhood organizations were a tremendous asset, and so the city should fund some of that work. Then we went to CURA, the Center for Urban and Research Affairs, and they did a study of neighborhood organizations. And they said the way that the resources were distributed were inequitable. They gave us a new plan for how to equitably distribute those funds, and that's the process that we are in right now. In this most recent budget, the mayor is proposing a $5,000 increase to all neighborhood organizations across the board.
Thank you. Soren?
Thanks for the question. Our neighborhood associations are really vital to our neighborhoods and across Ward Eight. And they need dedicated funds in order to continue to operate. From Bancroft, which is exploring snow removal, their goal is to have Bancroft Neighborhood Association remove all of the snow in the Bancroft neighborhood from sidewalks. Bryant and Candu have excellent anti-racism and food security programs. Lindale has the Lindale Walkers, which has so famously done such good for the neighborhood. And the Kingfield Neighborhood Association has done a lot of good in the encampment response, particularly in 2020. These organizations are vital to our communities, and unfortunately, under Council President Jenkins' leadership, they have been allowed to shrivel, to the point where many neighborhood organizations are having to get rid of beloved staff, including here in Kingfield, and to the point where neighborhood associations can't meet their basic programming. I do support the re-alotting of funds, but the problem is that they're re-alotting not enough funds already. There needs to be more money for the neighborhood associations so that every neighborhood association can maintain its current programming and an appropriate amount of staff. This is the exact reason why Steve Brant, who's on the Board of Investment and Taxation, has endorsed me. Steve Brant is one of Kingfield's own. This is a really important issue that we need to put more funding to.
Thank you. Next question. As the small businesses and properties along Lake Street struggle to transition out of the pandemic, damage from civil unrest, and an economic recession, what are the three things you would champion as a city council member to help this commercial corridor recover and thrive in the future? Soren?
I think it's really important that the city implement what's called a land value tax, which is a little bit complicated, but essentially what it means is that land speculators, people who just sit on vacant land, won't be able to do that anymore. They'll be required, well, not required, but they will be financially incentivized to build on their land so that we won't have these wonderful corridors of ours sitting with empty teeth, is basically what it is. And so that is one really important thing that we need to do to make sure that our vital commercial corridors remain vital, remain robust. There's a lot of work that needs to be done and a lot of resources that need to be put to keeping our small businesses open. We're seeing small businesses continue to close from the effects of the pandemic, and as our spending habits change, small businesses are getting hit the hardest. So it's important that we do that. It's important that we have a tax system that favors people who are building housing, opening businesses, using the land rather than sitting on it and waiting for the land to go up in value for them to get a cash cow in 10 to 15 years.
Thank you. Terry?
Yeah, I'm not sure if anyone's tried to go out to lunch in Uptown or in that area recently, but it's vacant. I mean, I've done that, and I'm often the only person in any of those restaurants. I think part of the problem here really is crime. I do think the homeless situation deters people. I think when people have choices to go other places, they do. I don't think the city's helped with some of the decisions they've made about parking around Lindale and Hennepin in particular. I think it hurts small businesses when they have no parking, so I think that's something we really need to look at. But at the same time, yes, I want to, I would definitely support programs to foster more small businesses in there, tax incentives, if that would help. But it's definitely a problem, and I think, you know, you can't have people doing, you know, shooting off guns on the major intersection of Lake and Lindale and think that this is going to attract anyone to that area. So you're not going to get investment, I think, until, you know, we address the homeless issue and the crime that's also occurring in that area.
Thank you. Bob?
Well, I pretty much supported exactly what he said as far as cleaning up the neighborhoods and getting rid of the homeless people living in tents and having more police available to arrest people that are breaking the law. Other than that, I do know that the city has made some bungles as far as they, they, there used to be a four-lane street over on Cedar Avenue at 42nd Street where people could park in front of the businesses that are there, and they changed it into a two-lane road with no parking available on either side of the street so nobody can park in front of the businesses that they used to park in front of, and the businesses are losing money. So they need to go back and straighten out what they screwed up.
Thank you. Andrea?
Yeah, I mean, Cedar Avenue is a county road, and so Hennepin County made those decisions, so the city can't go in and change that at all. But what we can do is support small businesses through our Commercial Property Development Fund, which has helped several small people of color own businesses to grow and own their own businesses. We can, for the past three years, I have sponsored Black Business Week in Minnesota, in Minneapolis. Black women are some of the fastest-growing business owners Black women are some of the fastest-growing business owners in our city and throughout the country, and so supporting those entrepreneurs is really important. We've invested millions of dollars in Lake Street, in and along Lake Street, to help support those small businesses. We need to continue to do that kind of work. And yes, we need to address the crime issues that are prevalent in areas like Uptown and other areas of town. It is true that our retail world is changing. People are shopping online. They're not shopping in commercial corridors as much as they used to, and so we're going to have to adapt, and I think businesses are adapting to that challenge.
Thank you. The next question. And some of this has been answered slightly, but it was an important one from the audience. Minneapolis 2030 Plan Included Changes in Traffic Patterns, Including More Bike Lanes. Do you feel this is working as envisioned? What changes need to be made, if any? Andrea?
I think it's the 2030 Plan referring to the Transportation Action Plan. We have seen less pedestrian deaths. Interestingly enough, the research that went into the development of that plan showed us that the majority of accidents and pedestrian deaths were happening in communities of color, which is an equity issue. And so the protected bike lanes, the street calming efforts that the 2030 Plan calls for slows traffic down. We just went to a 20 is plenty speed limit in the city of Minneapolis and in the city of St. Paul to try and slow cars down. You know, I think those plans are working. We got to give it time to have more of an impact, but I think the plans are working.
Thank you. Bob?
Well, I guess I'm not necessarily a big fan of the bicycle lanes. I think that there should be some of them, of course, but I think they kind of went overboard on them. And also, I'm not in favor of slowing down traffic. You know, it used to be fine when it was moving along at 35 miles an hour and not getting stopped at every intersection for a red light and sitting there for three minutes waiting for it to change. You know, it's, you know, it's like, we don't want these people to get to work on time, I guess. I don't know. But, so I don't know. And then along with that, they have these posts sticking up in the middle of the road which interfere with plowing snow, and, you know, and so, you know, I'm not the only one that's kind of had enough of those things. So I'll leave it at that.
Thank you. Terry?
I think that calming tactics are working. For some reason, it's incredibly hard to get a driving test in this city, and so my son failed his first test because we went out of town, and the speed limit was 35, and he was trying to go 20, and so he was failed for going too slow. So it's definitely working. I, too, can't stand those posts in the street. I think that a lot of times, you know, city planning seems to forget that we have six months of winter here with massive piles of snow and plows. So I think they did their planning in the summer, really. I do. As far as bike lanes go, you know, I think bikes and cars need to be able to coexist together. Some areas of the city, I think it's fantastic. Other areas, I might change. I think it can be a problem when there's the curbing in between a bike lane and the street. I'm not sure how they're going to plow around that. I think as a driver, it can be distracting. I often see people drive over them, or, so that might be an education thing, but definitely bike lanes and cars need to coexist. Thank you.
Thank you. Sorin?
Yeah, this is really important. Thanks for asking the question. My first priority when it comes to transportation is the safety of our streets, and so we are in a situation where not all of our streets are safe for every user, and it needs to be the city's duty to go out and make sure that our streets are safe for people who are walking, biking, taking transit, and people who are driving. And that means that we need real transit options for every user. A real option is not when you pull up Google Maps and it says it's a 10-minute drive or a 45-minute bus ride. That's not a real option. A real option is where they're comparable, and city decisions have directly led to us having a transit system and having a biking and walking system that are not real options for a lot of folks. A lot of that is racist infrastructure development from the 50s and 60s of plowing giant roads and freeways through black and immigrant communities. And so we need to go back and remedy those issues and make sure that we have real options and safe options for everyone in the city to get around. The state legislature, Aisha Gomez, our tax chair, just delivered a huge new investment in transit funding, and it's time for the city of Minneapolis to follow through on their end to make sure that that transit funding can mean we have a fantastic, a world-class transit system here in Minneapolis. I also think we need to bring back Open Streets Nicolette. That is a fantastic event that needs to come back.
Thank you. All right. The next question. This for Ward Eight. How can the city council promote and advance diversity, equity, and inclusion in our neighborhood and city government? Terry?
I mean, I believe there is a statute already where they're, whenever they're passing a bill or considering ordinances, that equity has to be embedded in that, and I support that. You know, I do think it's, and I've been asked this while, you know, I've been out campaigning, well, how does a white man represent people of color? And, you know, for me personally, that means welcoming them into the conversation, making sure that they are given fair representation, especially when they're looking for, at job placements, I think. And one of the things that I've proposed is that I would, I would like to see, if I'm elected to be your city councillor, a satellite office in George Floyd Square, where anybody who wanted to come in and voice their concerns was welcome to do so. I want to be available to every person in this community, and I think that's one of the ways that I can support BIPOC people. Like I said, I think the city government plays a big role when they're looking at contracting with different companies to also take that into consideration. Thank you.
Thank you. Sorin?
This is a super important question. Thank you for asking. It's really unfortunate that the city of Minneapolis is trying to do equity and inclusion work, but at the same time, the COO of the city was accused by dozens of city workers of creating a racist and hostile work environment. And the current leadership has not only kept her in her job, but current leadership has allowed this to continue. So if the city of Minneapolis in its own office can't have its house in order, how are its policies supposed to promote diversity, equity, and inclusion throughout the rest of the city? We know that there are so many issues that affect black and brown people first and worst. Those are issues of the rent going up unsustainably, which is why we need a strong rent stabilization. Those are issues of a public safety system that does not treat everyone with dignity and respect and doesn't protect everyone equally. A police department that's not accountable to us and that is riven with racism. We can and should devote so much of our time to dealing with racism in our city institutions and in our policies, and we have not done that. I am excited, as a first priority of me on city council, to deal with racism through our policies and in our city government.
Thank you. Bob?
Well, I've never had to deal with any of those issues, so I really don't know what they're doing, and I don't know how to address the issue at all. So I guess I don't have any opinion.
Thank you. And Andrea?
Boy, how best can Ward Eight address this issue? Elect a black, transgender, disabled woman, and you will have all that diversity represented on the Minneapolis City Council. I am the chair of the Race and Equity Committee at the city of Minneapolis. I instituted the truth and reconciliation work that the city is currently doing. I declared racism as a public health crisis, which is intended to address the issues that have been so tragically destroying our city and its relationship to people of color for decades. And so I'm committed to this work. I have been doing this work for my entire career and for the six years that I've been on the city council. Everything that my opponents have mentioned, I am actually literally doing right now at this moment, and will continue to do so when you reelect me to be your representative.
Thank you. In order to get to the closing statements in the right time and end on time, I'm going to ask this last question, sort of as a lightning round, and ask you to really just be very brief in your answers. If you are elected and are the next or current Ward Eight City Council member, what would your first three priorities be as you get to work? And that's to Bob.
I already sold one of my, one of my, one of my supporters that lives on Stevens Avenue that I would, my first priority would be to get rid of the homeless people that have been camping across the street from her house.
Thank you.
My top priorities would be affordable housing, public safety, and climate change.
Thank you. Terry?
My top three, I have a little different way of approaching it than I think Bob does, but I, too, want to see the homeless encampments, that, given real money to helping people move off the street, and I think we need to act quickly. And I'm also in this to support small businesses. I want to see the city revitalized. I think it's really, some parts of this city are really in trouble, and I think my third one here is certainly affordable housing. Thanks.
Thank you. Sorin?
My top priority is a public safety system that works and works for everyone, no matter what we look like, where we come from, or how much money we have. Next is a police department that's accountable to us and treats everyone with dignity and respect. Thirdly is working to make sure that our neighbors are not pushed out of their homes and pushed out of their communities, be it through rising rents, home prices, or taxes on seniors. And I'm going to give you four. The fourth is a city that deals boldly with climate change.
Thank you very much. Each candidate will now have up to one minute for your closing statement, and we will start with Sorin.
I love Minneapolis. My neighbors love Minneapolis. We love raising our families here, living here, and I want to see the benefits of Minneapolis shared with everybody who lives here. We can have a city that has a public safety system that works for everyone. We can have a city where the police are accountable to us and treat everyone with dignity and respect. We can have a city where our neighborhoods, our neighbors, and our communities aren't pushed out and torn apart by rising prices, and we can have a city that deals boldly with climate change. I'm realistic that these values may take a lifetime to implement, but it just so happens that I have a lifetime to devote to them. So I am asking for your first-ranked vote on November 7th because I am ready to get to work on our shared values here in Ward Eight.
Thank you. Terry?
Well, thank you for allowing me to share my views tonight. There's certainly a lot to digest. I really respect everything that my opponents are, have said and would like to see done. If you'd like more information about me, my positions, or to donate to my campaign, I recommend you visit betterminneapolis.com. I find the number of carjacking, thefts, and shootings in Minneapolis unacceptable. I find spending $21 million on Bryant Avenue while there are 40 homeless encampments with the potential of more unacceptable. I find the failure in leadership as seen with George Floyd Square and the 3rd Precinct Police Station unacceptable. Minneapolis is a great city, but we have work to do. I got into this race because I'm concerned if you elect one of my opponents, we will have more of the same. If, however, you want a responsive city councillor with 20 years of experience in navigating complex organizations and building bridges, I think I'm your candidate, and I ask for you to vote for me first on your ballot.
Thank you. Bob?
I've been spending a lot of my time this summer working outside in my yard and whatnot, and every day I hear sirens going by, just almost all day long, and it's continuous, and it seems like we must have an awful lot of crime for that to be happening. And you don't read about a lot of it in the paper because I think they don't, they don't publish a lot of that stuff, but the crime rate is at an unacceptable level, and we need to bring that under control, and that's why I'm running for city council.
Thank you. On behalf of all the cosponsors in the League of Women Voters Minneapolis...
Did I respond to that last question?
Oh, my goodness. I almost got through it. I'm so sorry, Andrea. Please answer.
Okay. Yeah, you know, I have over 35 years of public service to the city of Minneapolis. I have helped people of color, black people predominantly, get off the drugs and alcohol. I have helped moms through my work at Hennepin County get off of AFDC. I have worked at the University of Minnesota, talking to transgender and gender nonconforming people all around the country and throughout the world. And I have worked on the Minneapolis City Council as a policy aide, and subsequently, the last six years, as your city council representative, and I think I've done it ably. I've been endorsed by the past three city council members who have represented this ward, and I'm very proud of that endorsement and almost every single labor union in this city and state. And so if you want pragmatic, progressive leadership, vote for me. If you want chaos and gridlock, then you should vote for someone else that's on this panel. But I am here to offer leadership, equity, and access, and I've been doing that for the past six years, and I would love to continue to do that again. So please rank me number one on your ballot.
Okay. And now, on behalf of all of the cosponsors in the League of Women Voters Minneapolis, I wanted to thank the candidates for the Ward Eight City Council for being part of the democratic process by running for office and being willing to serve our community. We hope the forum has helped voters to make an informed decision. Many thanks to MCN6 for recording this forum and the Reverend Martin Luther King Jr. Recreation Center for providing space. The video recording of this forum will be available in English and Somali, unedited, for viewing on the League of Women Voters Minneapolis website later this week. Recordings may not be edited by the candidates or the public or used for partisan purposes. The League of Women Voters also researches issues important to our members and the health of our communities. If you are interested in finding out more about what we do and how you can make a difference, please visit our website and consider joining us as a member or volunteer. You can find more nonpartisan information about candidates and about voting at another League website, vote411. Information on voting and registering to vote can also be found on the Minnesota Secretary of State website, minvotes.gov. Remember, Election Day is Tuesday, November 7, and early voting began September 20 Remember, Election Day is Tuesday, November 7th, and early voting began September 22nd and continues through November 6th. Please vote. Your voice matters, and we thank you.
Good luck to you. Good luck to you, Andrea.
Nice to meet you.
Nice to meet you.
Good luck to 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 you.